No, I'm not on. I got you guys off.
Hello.
Dennis is.
Paul, are we being recorded?
Uh, we're almost ready to go. Standby.
We're live.
Okay, guys, we're live.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the, uh, March twenty-one meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegion. Do we have a flag, Paul?
Yep, try start the flag there in the chair.
If you have it.
Yeah, trying to queue that up. Standby.
Who wants to start us off?
Can't see the flag.
Yeah, I can't see it either.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull that up. Sorry, guys, it's, uh.
Uh, let's go on without it. Ready?
Trace, Trace, go ahead, please.
Oh, here we go.
There we go.
Pledge of Allegion. To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now Vera's not here, of course.
Uh-oh.
And, uh, I have, has everybody read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, can I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Liz, are you writing all this down?
Oh, you know what? Hang on a second. Thanks for the reminder. Okay, hang on.
Sorry.
So on the minutes, and these are the minutes of
February twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. And the motion was?
That was me, Liz Simon.
Okay.
And the second was?
That was me. Hugo.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
John Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
You're on mute.
Dennis?
They haven't heard him.
Muted.
Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Is Steve Wilhelm the only board member that's absent?
Yes.
And Charlie. Dennis, you have to click on mute, please, sir.
Oh, and Charlie.
Yeah, aye. I voted aye.
Oh, good.
And Charlie is also.
I was muted and didn't know it.
Welcome back.
Yeah.
Is there anyone?
Steve Wilhelm and Charlie are absent.
Right.
Yeah. Sorry.
You ready, Liz?
Thanks.
You ready?
Yeah.
Anthony, are you representing the Sun property?
Hey, do we have to do the, uh, I think we're alone now?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we have to reopen the public hearing, Liz.
Did you guys, did you do the I'm alone in the room thing?
I'll start it off.
Oh. I, I'm gonna call on all the members and when I do, please state your name and that you're alone in wherever you are. Uh, Dennis?
Dennis Lars, I am home. I'm by myself.
Hugo?
Hugo German, I'm by myself.
Hello. John Carlo?
Hello, everybody. My name is John Carlo Gattucci. I'm a member of the Kent Planning Board. I am alone on the Moa, uh, Mars Rover.
Simon?
Simon Carey, member of the planning board. I'm here my own.
And I'm Phil Tolmac, also a member of the planning board, and I am alone. And we will move on to Sun property. Is there someone here, uh, we need to reopen the public hearing, Liz?
Yes.
Actually, you need to open it for the first time.
Yeah, this is the first hearing.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Open. Just open it.
I'll make a motion to open it.
And a second, please.
I'll second that.
And once again, Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
John Carlo?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Uh,
The public hearing.
In the Sun property, to describe the application, please go, go ahead. Briefly.
My name's Tony Pizzari. I'm the engineer for Westchester Modular Homes, and I'm representing the Sun property here tonight. Uh, basically, we came in, Mr. Sun wishes to, uh, build a house on Westwood Drive. He has gotten, uh, all his necessary permits from the Health Department, the DEC, the DEP, anybody that had an interest in the thing. He's got, uh, all of his permits. Uh, we were before the board to get an erosion control permit when it was realized that Mr. Sun also purchased the property next to the one where he wanted to build. Uh, the property that he, where he wanted to build was legal non-conforming in size, meaning it was, it was too small. The lot that he purchased that is a direct abutting piece um, is also too small, but will be combined, uh, at the end of this process so that both lots, Lot number twenty and Lot number twenty-three on the map would be combined into one parcel, which I believe is still legal non-conforming in size when you put the two pieces together. Um, we spent some time studying the second lot to see if it was feasible to move the house and septic on the second lot because it was flatter. However, due to constraints of wells on other properties and that sort of thing, it couldn't be done. So we're here before the board to, again, to try to get this, um, erosion control pit, uh, permit for a house, a well, and a septic, um, a driveway on Lot twenty, and pretty much that's it.
Great, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Liz or Bruce, do you want to start off or John?
Sure. Um, so as Tony indicated, uh, the board has reviewed this single-family residence to be constructed uh, along with a deck and a driveway, a parking area, well and septic. The pole, total parcel size uh, combined with the two lots is just about three-quarters of an acre. It's in the R-eighty zoning district. Uh, it's located on the northern side of Westwood Road, and the access to the site is through an existing gravel base easement. Um, there had been some comments and analysis done because it appeared that the Lot twenty that Mr. Sun had acquired, based on topography and other environmental characteristics, uh, was perhaps a more desirable lot. But through the analysis that Tony alluded to, it, uh, turned out that that lot was not a viable building lot, basically due to the board of health issues. Um, and so, uh, in reviewing Mr. Pizzari's analysis and the most recent plans, I have just really two remaining comments. Uh, one has to do with the fact that, as we discussed at the workshop, this is a small area, as shown on the property survey, where the gravel improvements actually encroach outside of the right-of-way for the driveway. And that driveway does access, uh, an adjoining property not owned by Mr. Sun. So prior to the certificate of occupancy, that'd certainly be handled either by moving the gravel or more desirably by just moving the lot, uh, the, the line of the east end as Mr. Sun owns uh, all of those parcels. Yeah, there's just a standard phrase that any tree cutting or additional work on the lots once merged would require planning board approval. But I have no other additional comments, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Pizzari's and Mr. Sun's efforts on this project and, um, my recommendation to the board, if you feel comfortable, is to, with, uh, a public comment considered, um, to close the public hearing and have this go on administrative track and get this finished up.
Thank you, Bruce, and I, I am remiss. I should have asked everybody before you speak to identify yourself and John, do you have anything to add here?
Uh, a little bit, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Andrews. Uh, I'm with the firm of Rhodey Slick and Andrews. I serve as engineer to the planning board in this matter. I've kind of inherited it from Julie. Um, Mr. Pizzari, uh, has, has done a fairly credible job of, of replying to most of the comments. Uh, as Bruce alluded to, the updated feasibility study has been provided. Um, the responses were all reasonable and acceptable. Um, we have no further issues. Uh, he's added various maintenance notes to the plans. Um, the plans have been improved in legibility. He has also provided us with profiles. The unfortunate thing is I can't reconcile the profiles with the plan view. There seems to be a problem with the scale noted on each. Um, the information is correct, but you can't match one to the other. There's also no centerline stationing for either section, so it's kind of difficult to determine how they fit together. They do have a swale, uh, that, the detail has been provided. We are still looking for a written response or sign-off, uh, from the town highway superintendent since a portion of, one of the portions of the swale is to be constructed within the, um, town road right-of-way. Um, my understanding is, and I think Mr. Pizzari said he was, they were waiting till, uh, weather conditions permitted and get the highway superintendent out there. He'd rather look at it and then issue a letter. Um, he has proposed a bond amount. We take no exception to that bond amount. Uh, we will make a, um, a more formal recommendation upon closure of the public hearing, provided there are no substantive public comments. Um, couple, the new items, I just want to, um, echo what Bruce had said. The existing driveway does not fall within the described easement. Um, we believe that the easement description should be writ, rewritten to encompass the full limits of the driveway as built and is, as it exists, and then a new instrument be filed in the office of the county clerk. And then the last is there's no development proposed at this time for Lot twenty-three. The feasibility study and some of the comments in the record indicate that this property was purchased by the project sponsor as a buffer. Um, the project sponsor should consider, and the planning board may, may ask him to, committing to no development slash no disturbance of this lot and adding a note to that effect on the site plan as part of this approval. Um, again, most of the items are relatively minor, and, uh, we echo, uh, Mr. Barber um, comment that, uh, providing there is a satisfactory, satisfactory closure of the public hearing with no substantive public comments, we would ask the board to consider moving this ahead on an administrative track.
Great, thank you, John. Liz, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Can I just say one thing? Um, I want to make sure everybody understands that one of the things that we're proposing to do is to put a trench drain across the driveway uh, to try to intercept some water that's coming down from the top of the hill. And the coltext that that, that's gonna lead to are on Lot twenty-three. So there's gonna be a small disturbance, twenty by twenty probably, to put the coltext in, but outside of that, uh, there's no, no other, um, disturbance intended on that lot.
Right, Tony, that would just be any, any future disturbance, um, you know, but, but we're aware that the, that you have a stormwater destruction going on Lot twenty.
Yeah, my, my intent was not to preclude that. It was merely to preclude future development because those coltext are actually part of this application.
Correct, okay.
Is there anyone zooming in who wants to comment on this application? Mr. Sun, do you have anything, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. The property owner Roger Sun. It's my intention not to develop anything on the, the new Lot twenty-three. Uh, so I can, I can, I can guarantee that. I mean, basically, it's a kind of privacy and the easy access thing. So it's not my intention to do anything on it, on Lot twenty-three. So it's good for the environment if you think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I, as I said, I think it can be simply handled as a note. Uh, and I think Bruce actually has the wording in his letter that says, you know, no development, no tree clearing, uh, without, uh, prior approval from the, the planning board, if and when that should become necessary.
Bruce doesn't mind me plagiarizing his line. I'll take it verbatim and stick it on the plan.
Greatest form of flattery, Anthony. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions, comments?
Good move, Johnny. Oh.
Uh, I guess.
Um, do you want to check and see if there are any other public comments, if, if at all? Just one more.
Yep, Paul, is there anybody in? Is it?
I'm sorry, Bruce?
I'm sorry, uh, Phil, I was just gonna ask Paul if there's anybody in the chat rooms or on the phone that are trying to comment on the application.
Um, I don't see anybody, but if there is somebody that is a part of the meeting already, please unmute yourself and identify your, yourself with your question, please.
Hi, uh, my name is David Pelts. Um, I own the property across the street from, uh, at the bottom of, of Westwood Drive there, kind of on the turn. And I, I just, I, I wanted to, you were talking about the runoff, and I believe you refer to it as Kotex. The, I'm assuming that's some type of piping or that'll be done to address the, you know, obviously the lack of erosion control based on having a, a unpermeable surface there. Uh, can you, can you just expand on that? Or I, I want to just, obviously having a dirt road there, it's already a pretty significant problem. Um, you know, with, with just washout, we've had repeatedly the roads washed out, so curious about what, what the plan is there.
Right, so, so it's recognized that the drainage coming down this easement, um, was creating some issues, uh, down there, Mr. Pelts, and so the engineer, Mr. Pizzari, has designed that system to address and intercept that water coming off the driveway as it presently exists and put it into a series of, um, piping, let's say, called coltext units. It's an underground system where the water coming down the driveway will be directed away to this unit and then discharge the water into the ground rather than having it go across and onto the road. Um, so the net of it should be an improvement to the existing drainage conditions out there.
And just to amplify, sir, what, it's, it's almost a two-step process. He's put a trench drain, as he described, that collects the water across the full width of the exposed easement, discharges either side, and then closer down to the right-of-way, he's enhancing an existing swale to try to keep the water and run it off, uh, rather than running directly onto the road. So the, the goal here and the intent is to improve conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question or comment on this application? Do I get a motion to move this to administrative track?
Close the hearing first.
Close, Phil.
Sorry.
You're right. Can I get a, close the public hearing?
Move to close the hearing.
I'll second.
In a second. And Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
John Carlo?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. And now a motion to move this to administrative track.
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
A second.
And Dennis?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
John Carlo?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Anthony, do you have any additional questions?
Uh, no, I did promise, uh, John, that I would get him a set of plans that I could scale, that he could scale. Um, when I add these other, uh, some other items on there, the centerlines and the roads of the driveways and, um, the note from Bruce, uh, I'll make you, uh, I'll plot, assuming my plotter stays alive. I'll, I'll plot your set here and I'll mail it directly to your office if that's okay.
Yes, but, and, and, and Bruce, just jump in since I'm the newbie here. Um, the administrac, administrative track requires that you dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So the, the, the set of drawings that you're going to prepare actually serves as the basis for the final permit issuance, if you will. So it's important that these become, that any little loose edge you button up. And, um, that's, that's the goal here.
Okay.
Right, right. So just if you have any questions, Tony, um, you know, just let us know. That way we can get it right the first time and get the plans in and, uh, get them ready for signature, okay?
Right, I'll go through the comment later, letters, make sure there's nothing that I missed. And then if I have any questions, I'll call either one of you guys and we'll get it straightened out.
That's great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mr. Sun.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
This is Roger Sun, again, the property owner. I do have one more question. Because I'm a kind of tree hugger, but, but at the same time, because in April, first deadline for the bad habitat stuff, can I plant a cotton tree? I mean, just the, just the, as, as much as possible?
So you're talking about the restrictions from the federal government where you're in a, what's called bad recovery zone, which restricts the tree cutting um, ending March thirty-first.
Right.
And basically, in order to have the tree cutting occur, you would have to do two things. You'd have to have the chairman sign and, and the town engineer sign the plans as complete, okay? And then the second is that you'd have the erosion bond accepted by the town board. The planning board has already recommended to the town board, the, the amount is satisfactory, your engineer has, uh, provided. So those two things would be necessary. So if you can get those done, um, by, you know, before March thirty-first, um, certainly you can proceed.
Okay, thank you.
We'll work with your engineer as, as fast as he can produce, and we realize you're under a deadline. And just a correction, Bruce, I just, we just have to formalize that bond process a little bit more. Um, but I don't know if it's been referred to the town board yet, so.
No, it, 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 plenty of it accepted the amount this evening, and so it's going to be heading to the town board for their acceptance, so.
Okay.
Um, so, Mr. Sun, I would, I would work with, with Tony and make sure that we do this as quickly as we possibly can, okay?
Okay, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Tony's been doing a real good job for you so far.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzari.
Hey, Simon.
Good night.
Good working with you.
Good luck.
Good night. But is there anyone here for the Holly property?
That's me. Um, I'm, uh, representing Winkler Farms, Bob Bradley.
Evening, Doc.
How are you? Um, I'm just, wanted to see if we've got any word from the, uh, attorney for the planning board.
Um, so let me, let me take that one. And I forgot to introduce myself before. My name is Liz Axelson. I'm the planning board's planning consultant, and I'm from CPL. That's my company. So, so to the planning board and, and to Mr. Bradley, um, so Mr. Bradley put together a really great summary, and I know that also Jeff Battistoni, the planning board's attorney, had gone digging into files, I guess at the county level. Um, so at this point, I believe we have whatever information is available. And so I spoke to, um, Jeff Battistoni today, and he feels at this point what he would like to do is, um, possibly at the beginning of the workshop meeting, which would be, um, April first, to hold an attorney-client privilege session with the planning board um, to discuss what to do next so that he can give them this guidance. And then that would allow the planning board to be ready, you know, for their regular meeting to try to, um, give some better direction than that.
It's an interesting day to have a, uh, to have a hearing on this. I don't know if it's an omen for us or a, uh, you know, the fact of being April Fool's Day. Uh, you know, it's interesting choice of dates, but so.
Well, that's, that's the workshop. The idea is, the sooner the board can put their heads together with the attorney, the better, and then you know.
I understand. Would we have, uh, some sort of an answer on, uh, toward the end of the, sometime on the evening of the first?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know. Um, I think uh, when Jeff and I spoke today, the goal was to try to allow the board to have that attorney-client privilege session as soon as possible, and as soon as we would have a quorum would be the workshop. So possibly there might be some word that night and and ultimately, if not, they would, you know, I don't know if Jeff Battistoni would issue some kind of a letter for um, the regular meeting, which would be on the eighth, I believe.
Would, would we be notified, let's say there is some kind of a, um, some kind of a decision made on the first, would we, would we be notified of, of what had, uh, occurred and what our next step would be?
That's, that's the intent, is for the board to have that discussion.
That could be on the second, then.
What?
We could hear something on the second.
Possibly, yeah. I mean, what I don't know is whether Jeff is gonna want to put something in writing or just have a verbal um, say something verbally, um, maybe even on the first. I can ask him that.
All right. You just, and, and again, just let us know, because again, you know, everything's being held up just, just because of this.
Yes, of course.
All right.
Hang on just a second. So the questions are, um, would there be word on the first or the second?
Yeah, basically, when would we find out if there is in fact a decision? Or if, if the fact that he has an opinion, uh, when would we know what his opinion was?
Yep.
Or what his opinion is, what his opinion is.
Yeah.
I can tell you it'll be, it should be no later than, you know, in other words, whatever direction he's gonna give the board, it should be no later than the regular meeting, but hopefully sooner.
Okay. All right, well.
Is that clear? Okay, is that, and is the board have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're really, we're still tied up in all the legality for this whole thing, right?
That's right.
Yes, and I guess my understanding is it seems like at this point all the digging that Mr. Bradley did and Jeff Battistoni did, um, they found whatever information is available. So, so what do we do from here? So that's, the goal was to come up with some kind of a direction.
And we are ready to go ahead with the, uh, with the engineering and present that relatively quickly. Yeah, we've got a preliminary. So, um, as soon as, you know, as soon as we get the word, we can, uh, you know, we can continue with this relatively quickly.
Yeah, you're spreading off with square one. News surveys and the whole thing.
Yeah, no, that's no problem. I mean, that's, we understand all of that.
Yeah, from when you and I were talking about it at Vera's office that one day.
So we understand what we need. We just, we've been, um, you know, waiting on this for a while now, so hopefully this will do it and something like that.
So we get all the legal stuff untangled, and then we know that we can go ahead technically. We hope. Okay.
I think that's the goal, anyway.
Yeah, right.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Wish I could give you more than that, but that's, uh.
You know, we're, uh, slowly but surely.
All right.
All right, so I'll, I'll check back with, uh, I guess with Vera, just if, I guess you let Vera know or something and uh, she can forward it on to us, or if you could just forward us an email, or forward me an email.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the practice of the planning board is typically that if a consultant is issuing something about a project to the planning board, that typically is forwarded directly to an applicant representative.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much.
Good night, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night. All right. Is there anyone here for Zavgarodney? Bruce, you want to handle this?
Sure. Um, so, uh, John and I, uh, went out to look at this particular property. And, uh, is Bill Walters is still here. Bill can chime in as well. The applicant, uh, has created some land disturbance on his property, which also included tree cutting and vegetation removal. And introduction of what is reported to be twelve hundred cubic yards of fill. Uh, within a town of Kent jurisdictional wetland and wetland buffer area. And accordingly was given stop work order or violations from the town code enforcement officer. So now the applicant has applied and is requesting an erosion semi-control permit and wetland permit from the planning board. To number one, legalize these actions, uh, that are the, uh, subject of the violations. As well as to further introduce an additional four thousand cubic yards of fill. And to construct a pool and pool house all within, uh, a wetland and wetland buffer area jurisdiction to the town of Kent. Uh, the subject property in total is about six point four three acres in size. It's situated on the western side of Owen Road. And the applicant will be required to get a steep slope erosion control permit, a wetland permit and site plan approval from the board. Um, the applicant has not yet provided any zoning information, including setbacks, bulk zoning tables. Um, so we're not sure, uh, with respect to the proposed pool and pool house, whether they are relative to zoning. So we're going to need that information. Uh, the applicant did provide a short form environmental assessment form. This is an unlisted action under seeker. And therefore determination of environmental significance will be required to be made by the planning board. Um, the applicant provided a wetland report and, uh, as I said, John and I visited the site on March ninth, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, just to get a field inspection, have a look, I could not, uh, verify the wetland delineation at that time. You know, it's just a few days ago. There was still a lot of snow there and so I will need to go back to confirm the wetland delineation. It also is possible, looking at the site on the ninth, that this, uh, particular wetland acts as a vernal pool. Vernal pool is a kind of special type of wetland system, which generally will, um, have as a, uh, habitat and breeding area. Uh, amphibians and, and things of that nature. As indicated, twelve hundred cubic yards of filler brought to the site. The total amount of wetland to be filled at the end of the proposed project is one thousand four hundred and forty square feet. And eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet of wetland buffer will be permanently impacted. Uh, the owner was present when John and I were at the site. He indicated that his purpose is to create a more level and larger rear yard. As well as to construct the aforementioned pool and pool house. Um, in my memo, I referred the applicant to the pertinent sections of the town wetland code, chapter thirty-nine A. Um, and basically, um, what we're looking for, at least at the beginning from the applicant is. Kind of the, the narrative as to what the overall purpose was in, 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 in doing this type of work. Um, and one of the strong components of, uh, the town's wetland code is one of avoidance. In other words, can you do something outside the wetland and wetland buffer and, and serve a similar purpose, uh, or similar proposed action? And there is a relatively level rear yard immediately to the back of the property, the back door of the property. That at least appears that it could be suitable for a pool and pool house and not impact, um. The wetland and wetland buffer degree that they're already impacted. So we're looking for more information, um, with respect to the, um, purpose behind, uh, the proposed action. And if there are alternatives that can be done, um, so that if the pool and pool house could be located in an existing disturbed area. Um, then the wetland itself could be the source of a mitigation plan. In other words, replanting the wetlands. Restoring the hydrology, removing the fill from the wetland area, et cetera. Um, when we were at the site, uh, um, John and I noticed that the fill, uh, brought to the site appeared to be mostly. A mixed bag of material, um, but, and it was partially covered with snow as well. There were some asphalt pieces and some brick pieces suggested that there was perhaps some, some CMD material there. And generally the planning board in the past, if this fill is to be left in place, has required the fill to be tested according with DEC standards. Um, there's several drains, uh, that now discharge directly to the wetlands. Um, I'm not sure what the purpose of those drains are, what they're connected to. Uh, the slopes that are now part of the fill sections that were wrote to the site do not appear stable and John will talk to that more than I. Um, and then there's just a lot of additional information that we need. Uh, property survey, uh, existing or preconditioned topographic survey. The house only was built three years ago. So we should be able to get information as to what the property looked like before the fill was introduced and all the trees were cut down. I need a copy of the deed, um, the documents provided to the town, the applications and if were not executed, they need to be signed. Um, zoning setbacks were unclear for rock chipping and blasting and, uh, hammering might be required. Um, it's possible, not probable, but possibly, because when you're filling in a wetland system. You may need to obtain, uh, federal permits, Army Corps of Engineers permits, but I do not believe. This would be considered waters jurisdictional to the United States. It's rather isolated, but we still do need to check. And then pursuant to our code, um, to provide a pre and post-construction wetland hydrology, in other words, the, the site has been so altered. The regime of water getting and staying to the site may have changed, which of course will change and actually the wetland and wetland function. And also, uh, pursuant to our code, a wetland functional analysis needs to be done. Uh, pre and post-construction, the wetland has, uh, certain purposes out there. If it's altered or changed. Um, those change, those purposes can be modified as well. Um, but I think the, the most important thing is to, to have the board consider that. You know, based upon the preliminary, um, analysis, um, and site inspection. Um, it would appear, in my opinion, that the proposed pool and pool house could be located immediately off the rear of the home. Um, in a flat, uh, area which, uh, has been managed and maintained. It's a lawn surface, I believe. Um, and that would get the programming requirements for the applicant addressed. However. The wetland buffer and wetlands could then be restored back to, um, over time, the original condition and original function. So John's going to talk a bit about work additionally that needs to be done and do some stabilization. Um, but I think, uh, that's where we'll leave it right now. And by the way, I apologize, Phil. My name is Bruce Barbour. I'm the town's environmental consultant. John.
Okay. Uh, again, my name is John Andrews. I'm a New York State licensed professional engineer. I'm with the firm of Rhodey Psychon Andrews and I, uh, serve as engineer to the planning board in this matter. Uh, I'm going to repeat some of Bruce's stuff. You should have a memorandum from myself dated March eleventh. I apologize the, the fact that it, it, it approaches novel length, but, um, I, I think there's a lot that needed to be said about this particular piece. Um. The lot was previously cleared, as Bruce said, and trees were removed and they accepted about twelve hundred yards of fill. Um, it was, uh, subject to a, of an order of remedy last June, uh, issued by the building inspector, I believe. Subsequent to that, there was a discussion with the planning board and, uh, the applicant at that time wanted to continue to bring fill, so on and so forth. The net result of that discussion was, according to my records, um, and. Is that there was to be no further fill on the site. And it was to be stabilized as is and they were to make application for a permit. Here we are. Um, they have made application for the permit. That, that permit, as Bruce says, is for both a wetland, freshwater wetland permit and an erosion control permit. The intent of which is to legalize the prior activities and to expand those activities. To allow the placement of an additional four thousand cubic yards of fill. And, uh, as Bruce indicated, the expressed intent of the owner was to create a level area to support a future pool and pool house. And possibly some other improvements. You know, he was kind of vague, but, um, he has plans. Let's put it that way. We did make a field observation visit. The owner was there. The site is partially snow-covered. Um, they did make an effort to their credit to stabilize it. They did put some silt fence, uh, rather substantial amount of silt fence. They've got some, um, stone walls and other stuff has started, but clearly the site has been cleared and filled. The, the initial, I guess, the impetus for this work was, I guess, there was a major storm and there was substantial storm damage in this area. And as a consequence, in terms of cleaning up the trees, he decided to take it to the nest level and expand his, with the fill. The fill itself was an inconsistent mixture. It was soil, wood chips, miscellaneous wood and, and other materials, including an observable asphalt and brick. Uh, the, the fill was generally left as it was placed. It was just kind of struck off and, and left. The edges are beginning to show signs of sloughing and cracking. Doesn't appear that any meaningful effort was, was made to, um, compact the material as it was placed. The slopes that exist out there exceed the normal angle of proposed. The slopes cannot be left as they are. Uh, they need to be shaped and regraded to improve stability. Uh, we would recommend that the slopes be not more than three horizontal and one vertical. And that stabilization should be conducted so as not to increase the base. Fill footprint. In other words, I don't want them pushing the fill over and fill in a larger area. What they therefore may have to do is pull the fill back and actually remove some from the site or. Um, place it elsewhere. Um, they do have a number of dry-laid large stone walls and these stones are huge, about half the size of a small Volkswagen. Um, they're, they're to ultimately define the limits of fill on the bottom of slope, uh, in the eyes of the owner. However, it, the walls, as they're currently laid out, don't define the total slope that's shown on the submittal that they made. And the other thing of note is the location and height of these walls is subject to adjustment to suit the future placement of fill. In other words, just because of where they are today doesn't mean they're going to be there tomorrow. Just because they're three and a half foot today doesn't mean that they're not going to be, I think in one case approaching sixteen feet tomorrow. So there, there's some issues with those walls. Bruce said, there's a number of small diameter pipes that stick out of the face of the fill. The, the exact purpose is unknown, but it appears it's likely foundation and your roof drainage. Um, as I said, they did stable, make an effort to stabilize the, the site. Um. It's also kind of obvious that they cleared and filled. A wider area than just what's covered in the current plans that you saw. As you walk around the house, there's a large area of un. Exposed soil, unvegetated soil. And there's a, a, a stone wall along the one property line. And the soil level on the applicant's side is about two foot higher on the other side. So it looks like somebody placed some fill in there to, to smooth out the undulations in his yard and make it look a little better. There's also some excavation and cuts by the driveway. Uh, one of the excavation, uh, one of the cuts actually exposes the sanitary line. So you can see the, the, the four inch sanitary line for the, the building in, in the face of the slope. And, um, so in this case, because the wetlands appear to be the driving factor here, we would defer to Bruce. But, um, the, 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 the real crux of the matter here is. The applicant and his engineer did not provide sufficient information. To evaluate the wetlands and the impacts on those wetlands under your town code, chapter thirty-nine A. And they're specifically directed that they need to provide that information. It goes, Bruce goes into more detail. But as a consequence, the erosion and sediment control plan cannot be and is not approved. It needs work. And, and the first item, and, and I apologize, I don't mean to bold, but, um. Immediately when the weather permits, the site should be temporarily stabilized. The silt fence needs to be restored and reset. Additional may be necessary. The slopes need to be shaped and graded to a stable angle without increasing the base fill. All disturbed areas shall receive, uh, slope stabilization measures, including seed and mulch or rotor rolled erosion control matting. All points of discharge, pipe terminations and surface water combination concentrations. Shall be properly protected and measures implemented to stabilize conditions. And no additional site work, including placement of fill, construction of stone walls. Or other similar activities should be conducted until an appropriate permit has been issued. Um. And that permit may in fact be nothing more than a mitigated mitigation and restoration permit. Uh, depending on how the wetlands go. We, we performed a cursory review of the submitted application supporting documentation. It is quite obvious, based on the, the presence of wetlands and the significant impact. Um, that though it, they will need to be modified. And, um, I, I, I didn't spend a lot of time and I didn't want to waste a lot of the applicant's money reviewing plans that are obviously going to be subject to change. Um, I did do some research and aerial photography. I did, uh, uh, attach. A, a aerial photograph from Google Earth dated twenty sixteen. It basically shows the house and, and, and the area fully stabilized. It was actually in pretty good shape back in that time. Doesn't give us any contours, but, um. Uh. As a consequence, what we really need is information with which to establish the predisturbance conditions. I don't care what they submit. I think, uh, when Mr. Correll was on with us, uh, at the workshop, he did indicate that he has wastewater disposal and well approval documents and plans. Um, anything that may have been submitted in support of the building, uh, permit, you know, a grading plan, whatever. Any of that information should be, uh, made available to Bruce and myself and the planning board. So that we can, um, really get a good sense of where this place started. And, and where it is today and where it needs to end up. Um, and then the balance of my comments are, are, are basically the, the, the standard boilerplate. Once, once we get a handle on what, what's all going on. All the information necessary in the town code will need to be submitted. And, um, there's, there's one specific reminder is these retaining walls are currently proposed as dry-laid stone. Um. But according to, uh, requirements of the town code. Anything over three feet in height, uh. Will require a building permit and will require a design plan. So there's a lot of homework some folks have to do out there to, to understand what's going on. And, uh. There, there, we have a long ways to go. And I think we, we have, the, a project sponsor and applicant has to start by addressing Bruce's comments in more detail.
Great. Thank you, John. Liz, do you have anything to add?
Only just a point of clarification. It sounds like there isn't any action for the board to take tonight.
Tonight.
Right.
Do you have any?
I'm sorry, Phil. Um, you know, this is a circumstance too where, where, you know, there's a lot of studies. And information and design that's necessary, um, to move this forward and its current. Proposal with the pool and, uh, pool house and the buffer and the fill and the wetlands and what have you. So I'm going to. Uh, suggest to the board that if you feel it's appropriate, the board may want to schedule a site inspection on this particular property. Um, then you can actually have a look and see what John and I saw. Get a better understanding of the magnitude of what has happened out there. Um, because again, um, it, it, it appears, and again, it's only my opinion, it, what really just matters is the board's opinion here. But, but there does seem to be an area on the property immediately to the rear of the existing house. Where a pool and pool house could go rather than its current proposed location in the wetland and wetland buffer. Um, in that the site basically, um, just to give you an idea using words. Um, was effectively clear cut as per the definition in our town code. Um, there's, you look on either side of the property, you can see what it probably used to look like. It has not been altered compared to what is in front of you when you're looking at it from the subject property. And there's really just almost very, almost no vegetation left in the wetland buffer and, and areas of the wetland. Um, so, so rather. I'm sorry?
The driveway looks like an interstate highway.
Yeah, it, it seems.
Read from this.
Yeah. Yeah, Phil, the driveway also, you know, John had mentioned that it looks like there've been some changes to the, to the, to the land, to the topography. In, in addition to what we're discussing here today with regards to the wetland and wetland buffer. It appears that the area, the stone wall, um, on, on a property border had been filled. Um, and also it looks like some grade changes were done around the driveway too, as you're suggesting. I can't say for sure. Um, I wasn't really paying, you know, as much attention to that as I was the wetlands and wetland buffer issues. Um, but, but basically, you know, the code is very clear. But but basically, you know, the code is very clear. In in in, you know, the the tenants of wetlands is, you know, you avoid, then you minimize, then and only then you mitigate. So starting with avoidance, it seems to be feasible that proposed improvements could be put in an alternative location pursuant to the code and avoid further wetland impacts. Now, John is exactly right. There's still going to be some impacts to reshape those hills and get the slope stable and and get all that shaped up. But then a mitigation plan, a planting plan could be done. And there's going to be some hydrological work that needs to be done there as well because the fill has basically isolated or created hydrological pockets where there was free flow between the wetlands. And that's a sure way to dry a wetland system up. So there's going to need to be an analysis and looking at that. And and I think that that it 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 would be a good exercise of the board feels is appropriate. We can get you some pictures too, if you like, but you may want to have a look at this one.
Bruce, I can, if the board wants, like, I have pictures of when I wrote up the violation that can show. So I can send them out to the board if the board is interested in seeing those.
I I also, I also took pictures during the course of our visit. I'd be more than happy to share those with the board as well. You know, it, Bruce is right. It looks some, it looks like a war zone.
So, so yeah, maybe, maybe Phil and the board have a look at the pictures. They can, you know, be downloaded. You can have a look and see what you think. And then you can determine if you want to further, you know, look at it and go to the site. But at least the photographs, I think, will be giving you a really, a really good idea of what we've got going on out there.
I'll assemble those tomorrow and circulate them to the board members via email.
Bruce, I was just thinking, since you're saying that the magnitude of this is quite large, you know, what the disturbance is. I think it would be beneficial for me to actually to go out there. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think it would be good to actually physically go out there and see the magnitude of this.
No, it's the guy really took down a lot of stuff. I know. I know.
Yeah, he's your neighbor, Phil.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you have a look at? Yeah, whatever you folks feel is appropriate, you can look at the pictures and and go out and have a look or or just feel the pictures are adequate. Just to get a sense of what you have, because I I want the board to feel comfortable in in moving this forward without, quite frankly, wasting a lot of perhaps, perhaps unnecessary studies and analyses and all that sort of stuff, all in the end, just to say, you know, the board doesn't feel comfortable, the pool and the poolhouse going there. They want it restored. To frontload that and 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 move, if possible, towards the mitigation is is where the board might want to be with this.
Sounds good, Bruce.
I would just say, John, if 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 anybody's circulating photographs to try to use an email where I actually do a reply to all to something that I sent out because Vera's not going to be available maybe until beginning of next week. And I don't think you can reply to all to her list.
Right, right.
Just a suggestion, so everybody gets.
I've been circulating via individual emails, Liz, plus the the Kent, the the emails that you received today. So hopefully that should be acceptable. So I I will continue with that. Because Vera did provide us with a listing of all the individual emails. So I've been using those.
Good.
I'll I'll get the pictures out next week. I have a real full day tomorrow. And I'll work on it either over the weekend or Monday or Tuesday to get the photos out that I took in June last year.
Okay, thank you.
And and lastly, I I do have to go out and complete the wetland verification now that we have almost all the snow removed. So if I'm doing that and if a board member or board members would like to go out at the same time and accompany me, I'll let you know I'm going out through email and and we can work that out. I think though that we again need to make sure there's no quorum unless I'm mistaken. So it may have to be split up into different visits if you choose, all choose to go.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you.
And just as a, as an offer, if any of the board members want me in attendance, just let me know and I can, I can make pretty much make myself available to, you know, Bruce and I have been working pretty closely to coordinate our site visits. So if I need to coordinate with some of you board members and you'd like me out there, I'd be more than happy to do that as well.
Good idea.
So we move on to Best Discount Depot. Is there anyone in attendance from Best Discount Depot?
Yes.
Please give us your name and you want to give us a brief description of what you're for?
Yeah, I'm Amit Patel. I'm the owner of the Best Discount Depot and also on the property. And so that's why joining the review, you guys discussing, submit the application. And we just received some comments from the lease, like last night, all the regarding, like all the stuff. Say, I we have to go through, like, you know, front of the parking, like all kind of stuff. And the building is already done. We have the CEO. We just put the, like, you know, business was already operated. And if everyone recall, this was a liquor store so many years, burned out in two thousand and ten. They have a parking all the board pictures has a town board like at a building department. That's where we get the pictures. And same kind of setup we were just putting in over there. I just like upset any kind of traffic jam, anything on that towners road. So as a like a business owner, I don't know what else you can do to just minimize all the parking space without open the business. So that's, that's it. Like I'm just looking for your feedback, how we can resolve this thing.
Very good. Thank you. Who wants to start off here?
I'll go ahead. Even though, you know, Bruce and John Andrews and and I all, you know, looked at this application together. Because this all has to do mostly with zoning and code requirements. I did a report. I do not believe that either John or Bruce will need to do a report. Is that correct, Bruce?
Correct.
And John maybe needed to do something later?
I did not do anything at this time, Liz, because as you correctly pointed out, there really was nothing for an engineer to do because there was no proposed disturbance. You now have made some suggestions which may result in some disturbance. So I would suspect any review I have to do is rather minor and and in small scale.
Okay, great. Oh, wait, let me, let me give a status report to the board. So no action is recommended of the planning board tonight, Phil. And what I tried to do is approach this very similarly to the way that I've approached this type of review with existing commercial plazas or buildings. Trying to look at what we need to look at and focus. So I know Mr. Patel, probably when you looked at this memorandum, it seems, you know, like a lot. A lot of it has to do with information that needs to be added to the plans. One slightly positive thing is that because you're in the R ten residential district, this is a towners road overlay district over the R ten residential district and a lot of the lot and bulk requirements were favorable to your existing building and parking area. So I basically am giving instruction on how to demonstrate compliance of the existing project and and whatever you've done with the zoning. And I'm sure that your engineer, Jack Correll, will know how to handle that. The, and we're not really asking for changes except for one. And the main concern here, I realize it would ultimately take away two parking spaces. But the concept is that you have three parking spaces to the, I guess it would be west or left of the building if you're standing there looking at it. And four with a, an accessible parking space to the right or east of the building. And then it looked as if there were two in front, but the problem is they don't meet code requirements. And the other general can, well, two more general concerns. One is that for cars to move in and out of those parking spaces, create movements where it could create conflicts and accidents with the cars that are backing onto the road. So I want the board to understand that the existing parking that's existed for a long time does involve cars backing onto the road, but the site is very limited. So those parking spaces that back out onto the road really have to remain as they are, or they would have no parking at all. But the two in front also prevent a pedestrian way from the accessible parking lot into the entrances to the building. And there is an accessible ramp down to a business down below. And and again, we're just looking to get more information about what businesses are in there. And then the idea is the only change really that's physical is to create a strip of like a mountable curved planter in front and retain some of the existing asphalt right in front of the building so that somebody who has accessible needs can get by one way or another. There aren't big changes coming, but there are a lot of things to, you know, information to add to the plans. And Jack Correll clearly knows how to do that. So I would envision that if Mr. Correll can put most of that information on the plans that and make another submittal, that hopefully we'll be able to move forward after we have another submittal that's has all the information.
Man, jump in for me, Brian Finney, class builders. How are you? So I'm I'm just a little confused. So even while we're at the point we're at tonight, because it it's a site plan approval plus a sign, correct?
Yes.
I I already got the sign approval for three signs. Building permit, everything done to three signs. I got a C O for a fifty-two by thirty-nine commercial building, retail, office space, basement, retail, uh, storage area, commercial space with half an office. It seems like we're going backwards. Bruce, me and you had numerous meetings. Me, you, uh, what was her name, Julie? We met probably sixteen times on this matter. I'm just a little concerned. It seems like we're going backwards.
Yeah, no, uh, this is, I believe, the building that was reconstructed after the fire. And this does not have any environmental uh, impacts or issues to the project. I'm not sure what I would have added to the discussion, but
Yeah, it was all brought up because of this R ten zone, like the the towners road setback. So me and Julie had to meet numerous times on it. So we we got to, that's what I mean, we got the the signage. I got three signs approved. Not sure why Mr. Patel can't put a sign up. I have three eighteen square foot signs. I've got a seal for my building with stating all the all three of the things. I mean, so there's zone, there's variances, there's all this that I have on file that dates back to even before nineteen eighty-seven. Nineteen seventy-one, I have one for, for the parking. Again, it just seems like we're going backwards. I I did all this already.
Sorry, can I ask you a question? When did you get approval for the signs?
Oh, March.
Last year, I believe.
March.
If I can just clarify something, what has triggered this particular review is a change of use. The addition of retail to the mix of uses there. And the other thing is
I have paperwork saying it's a retail spot. Uh, excuse me, a change of use already from when it went from a liquor store to no, from, excuse me, from a bar restaurant to a liquor store. It was a change of use. And that was to the retail. Aren't we still the same retail?
It's another retail use.
Brian, if I might interject, you have a C O. Brian, you have a C O for retail and the office spaces and everything else. When the building was originally, the original variance was back in the seventies and eighties, it was one occupancy. That variance covers that. Now you have multiple businesses in that building. The building is CO'd for that, but now what the zone, what the planning board is trying to do is is allocate those spaces and get them legalized, not legalize, a bad word.
Conforming.
Define what's in that actual building.
Okay, okay. It 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 does help. It does. Yes, yes. But again, so a sign permit shouldn't even be part of it, correct? What, why would he have to go for another sign permit?
The application was for sign and site plan. And actually, all the sign information, there are very few comments about that. I don't think anybody has an issue with any of the signs.
Okay.
And and it's just a matter of adding in some information and clarifying whether there's going to be lighting or not. That's those are the only comments relative to sign.
No lighting, no lighting, same way structure is applied, same square foot. That's why we submitted. No, we just keeping the same format, no lighting on it.
Okay, well, that's, I I think that.
I I think if I may jump in to help Liz, if 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 you were to look at the information that we received, everything that you have told us makes perfect sense, would have made our job easier. But it was not part of the information provided to us. So I think you have to, and understand that we're we're not looking to reinvent the wheel either. We had a similar discussion, but when you look at the package of papers that we received, it's lacking in information. So I'd say the large extent of Liz's comments are give us the information in the standard form that's required. And if if somebody had already told us there was three uh, approved signs on there and had paperwork saying that, would have made her job a lot easier. But so please understand, we're 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 operating from a lack of knowledge position rather than trying to be difficult or argumentative.
Okay, no, completely understandable. Thank you very much for clearing it up. Yes, absolutely.
Brian and and as I spoke to Emmett the other day, the variance for the signage is for the size of the sign. There was also what wording was on there also. But the all signs need to be approved by the planning board. And that's why you were sent to the planning board for that, that particular step was the actual wordage that was going on.
Wasn't the size or how many, it was just.
Because you already got a variance for that. You already said. Okay, what they're going to approve now is what's actually going to be on that sign.
Okay, understandable. I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
And the ultimate goal here is to get plans that show us everything that we need to know about the site. And you'll have, the more information that's on the plans, the better, because ultimately down the road, you'll have a signed document that will tell you.
Liz, if you recall, I was with you, Bruce, and about five months ago, I discussed every single project, what we try to do in this area, you know? So we always come to you guys and what we we try to do the right way, you know? But sometimes these things open up is not intentionally. The building was there so many years. I've been in this town eighteen years. So I saw every single thing. We tried to make a growth to make a net. There was a big hole. I just, we put that good building, make a nice, same kind of parking space was there years ago, and we tried to make a utilize zip for all the community. I don't need no traffic, no heating, nothing there. For same sense, we just want to like give the communities. We just wanna like give the communities better, like, you know, swapping experience, you know?
Mr. Patel, um, yeah, thank you for sharing that. You know, I do recall you and Brian coming in with Julie and I, um, there really are no environmental issues for me to comment on, but you know, there was a, a need to bring materials in for the application and we're very appreciative that, uh, we're able to get those in and now that work can be starting to review it. But the differences in uses, this is a routine that the planning board does just to make sure the site plan and in this case, there was not a site plan, uh, is going to be reasonable for the use accordingly. So um, we're very glad you're able to finally get the plans in, but as, as John said, and I really didn't spend a lot of time looking at them because it's, it's, there's really nothing on the environment for me to do on this. Um, but, uh, you know, the material is really um, needed fleshing out, and I think that it's been very helpful that you've provided that information tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
Ryan, Mr. Patel, one of the, probably the best example I can give you is this plaza upward Dunkin' Donuts is. And they, that's all retail down on the bottom and office space up above. All those individual spaces down below all get C O. So if those, if a, if an office, say the dry cleaner moves out and a restaurant wants to go in there, that's a change of use. And now that space needs to be clarified and that goes through a plan review. If, if the offices upstairs come downstairs and use one of the spaces that are on a ground level, that's a change of use. If it's a retail and it's, and the retail business goes out, when the ice cream shop was there, that was a mercantile. That went out, another one went back in its plain place, same use. All we had to do was issue a, a building permit, a C O for the work that was done. They didn't have to come back to the planning board because it was the same use. It was just, it was just a different name on a bill, on the door.
I, I understand Bill, that's not the issue. Whatever we try to do on this retail space, what kind of business? I don't mind. I can share everything, show you, but what's the biggest challenge we facing? You know, like a parking kind of, always you have limited parking kind of thing, you know? So that's the challenge we are facing and we try to create like you know, hey, uh, that's gonna work, was working so many years, is nothing like we try to coming for something special. Okay, hey, give us the permit. So that's the issue we about business, everybody more than welcome to come. I can show the photograph, picture of the side, inside out. I have no problem for that.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, and thank you for clearing that up. I wasn't, I wasn't clear that for, for every commercial space, you know, that you needed to, you know, for extra retail space. So because there's already retail space on site for the next one. So I just thought it was retail, it was retail, it was clear. Now you cleared that up for me, Liz, that it's for every retail site. So let me come back. Thank you, Bill.
And just one point of clarification, in the comments, I asked for an illustration of, of the occupancies, because I'm not looking for an architectural aspect in this plan, just a kind of a diagram that, that breaks those spaces out and shows shows how they, what I'm trying to do with the plazas, the other plazas in town, just so you know, is to really try to simplify these reviews, even though, Mr. Patel, I'm sure when you saw my review, it didn't look like I was simplifying, but, but that is the goal. And you will end up with a plan that's detailed, that as you move forward, we'll have all this information on it. If you make changes, it'll be much easier to do.
I can take care of that, the detailed plan for you, just label every, everything in all those spaces and stuff for you. We can get that right over to you.
And, uh, the board.
I guess we should move on.
Okay, if it's okay with the planning board, if Mr. Finney, Mr. Patel, or Jack Correll want to have any offline consultation, I'll assume the board's okay with that.
Yes.
Yes.
And next, Patel Laundromat. Anyone representing this?
I am again. This is, I mean, but tell, and, uh, I'm also the owner of that property and this property bought like, uh, three years ago. And same house, I don't have any pretty much good luck with that. Try to find somebody can operate in our town to operate nice like a restaurant, yes, used for any kind of uh, retail space. So, and I also put the listing even also a year ago. And even broker did not even come across any want to purchase and do something. So finally, I just get the feedbacks from the communities over the time period. They just like some kind of laundromat. And all the time difficulty to go through the town of Kent, some lot of different places. I say, all right, so, and I get the feedback from the, our lake karma residence form, like a two of the member Sabrina Kuz and Seth Makas. And that's the majorities, everybody was like it. I said, okay, so. So, and then I proposed discuss like five months ago, Bruce Lee's and everybody. And I said, that's my intent to do, change of use and bring and, uh, that facility is already have a restaurant capacity and already been hooked up as a fifteen hundred and fifty gallon uses per day. And so whatever companies try to put it in CSC, they are the manufacturer and installer of the equipment. So we run the numbers. Accordingly, how many machines can be, we put it in, can satisfy the gallons uses. And that's way, and that's accordingly, architecture draw the plan of the thirty-two washers and rest of the dryers to make the facility uh, available for the community.
Thank you. Liz or John or?
Just to remind the board. Just to remind the board, um, Mr. Patel is, this particular site is in the sewer district. My understanding is, and, and, um, I, I think Mr. Walters will, will confirm that each property within the sewer district is allocated a certain design flow. This particular site, I, I think Mr. Patel said it, is one thousand five hundred and fifty gallons per day. Using standard New York State wastewater generation rates, and I don't know what he used. The gallons per day per machine can be anywhere up to five hundred and eighty gallons per day. Now, on that basis, you're looking at three machines. Mr. Patel just said thirty-two machines. When we spoke with Mr. Correll at the last meeting, there was no sense in us taking this any further until we could reconcile um, what the actual flows are, because I think Mr. Walters will tell you that, that my understanding is it's rather difficult to obtain any additional capacity uh, from the town board, and there's an expense and a timeframe associated with it. So based on our discussions, we were under the impression that um, Mr. Correll was going to take this back to the owner and that we were going to get updated information and, and some, uh, detailed representation of how the flows would be calculated and how they think they can support a laundry on the fifteen fifty gallons per day, excuse me. Gallon, yeah. Is that correct, Mr. Walters, I believe?
At the workshop last week, we've talked about all this.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, uh, the gallonage has been provided to the applicant on how many gallons, as he stated. Any increases have to go back to the sewer district board. And then I go, I think again, goes back to the town board if there's going to be an increase. I'm not sure what that procedure is going to be done, because nobody's ever done it before.
But I'm not look request.
Mr. Patel's got a calculation of what, what the machines put out, which is far less than the five hundred and eighty gallons. So.
We're gonna need some documentation on that. I, I haven't seen that, so.
Uh, no, definitely, definitely. This is just brought up the recently and comments. So I've already passed that comments to the company. The CSC service work, he send it to me on a typing things by requesting to send me the proper, you know, kind of a language and everything, machine, equipment. The pour like a twenty pounders, thirty pounder, forty pounder, so, and that can show pour spin, how many times the spin, and that's can meet the calculation. So that's, we will work on it and we will submit to you on a next workshop.
Okay.
That would be very helpful. I know that we, you know, at least from my standpoint as a planner, I could see where this would be a need in the community to have a laundromat. And I'd understood that you'd expressed that a few months ago. And I want you to know also that, um, because John had expressed this concern about the water flows and that we discussed it with Jack Correll. That, um, I didn't do any review on this project, really. I just briefly looked at it. But as soon as I realized that the water was a concern, I didn't do any further review or write a memorandum. Um, so let's see what happens first with the concern about water and sewer. And then we'll figure out what to do from there.
And I, I, I also think, um, Mr. Wilhelm had, I think he was the one that raised concerns about the available electric capacity and, um, the electric, the electric load for that building as well.
Right. So, so we did talk to Mr. Correll, uh, Mr. Patel, and all three of the consultants uh, uh, agreed and he agreed that we would hold off our reviews and, and wait until this information was provided. To ensure that the, the project was at least feasible and we could move forward with our reviews. So uh, we're waiting for Mr. Correll to provide this information to us so we can proceed if that's appropriate.
And just, just to be clear, this isn't this has nothing to do with anybody's idea about the use being appropriate or not. It's just this one factor that could determine whether it's going to be feasible, so.
Any, any information about the machinery? Any specifications on water demand and water discharge? Uh, electrical consumption? Uh, anything that would help us as a planning board and our consultants to, uh, evaluate the whole situation. Uh, put together a package and, uh, uh, submit it into the planning board so we can take a look at it.
Okay.
Right. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Nope.
No.
Move on to Delphin Studios.
Yeah, there's no.
Is there anyone here representing Delphin Studios? Who would like to talk to us about Delphin Studios?
Um, well. Hang on a second. I, I, I think we had all the information that we needed, that we discussed at the workshop. The applicant provided illustrations, dimensions, location of the signs showing that they matched the signs and the rest of the plaza. And the proposed signs are one foot by five feet. So they met the zoning requirement for the size of the sign. And, um, they're very detailed plans and I had no comments at all. And so I believe that the board, if they're in agreement, um, could do a simple, um, approval of the proposed sign.
John and Bruce, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, yep.
Gentlemen, any questions, comments?
Nope.
Can I get a motion to approve the sign?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. It passes. Is there anything else we have to do for Delphin?
No.
And we'll move on to Vitiello. Is there anyone here representing Vitiello?
Good evening, Chairman Tom, like members of the board. Uh, I'm Eric Cholam of Inside Engineering. Uh, here tonight, uh, to discuss the field change for, uh, Vitiello.
And, and Frank Vitiello is here as well.
And Carol Kurth, as well as, uh, Diana Wasorsek from my team.
Hi, Carol.
Hey there.
So, um, you see, I'm going to, uh, attempt to share my screen. I believe everyone is now seeing, uh, the field change sketch. Is that true?
Yep.
So, we had, uh, previously, uh, received, uh, approvals for, uh, building addition, uh, and a new garage, uh, back in November. As part of the, uh, the detailed design process on, on the architectural side and also, uh, field walks at the site. Um, it was determined that, uh, it was desired to shift the prose, the proposed garage back, uh, ten feet. Uh, I'm tracing here, this dash line, uh, was the approved garage location. Uh, this now, um, the area I'm tracing now is, is the proposed garage location. As part of, uh, the, the desire for that was um, the new family room in the addition. Uh, actually, let me call up. So we have some, some renderings here of, uh, this is a view looking up at the, the garage uh, in the approved location, uh, with the new house addition. And you can see, uh, the large, uh, set of windows that I'm circling here. Is, uh, where I'm going to show a, a view from next. Um, but as, uh, we also have a view of the, the, uh, the proposed, the proposed location shifted ten feet back. Uh, which again is, shows just a little bit more, uh, open space in there, a nicer courtyard. Um, this next view is this is the view, uh, from that window I had circled before from the family room. Uh, showing the, uh, the approved garage location. And, uh, as you can see, uh, a, a lot of the, uh, the view from that is, is of the sidewall of the garage. Moving it back ten feet, uh, allows, uh, for a, a, a more open view, uh, better views of nature. Uh, and this is the desired, uh, improvement, uh, in view, uh, that the video, Vitiello's are seeking. Um, the other, the other, uh, changes, uh, whereas part of part of this, uh, we did add, uh, a drain inlet, uh, just to uh, pick up potential snow melt, uh, from portions of, of the driveway. Uh, as if snow was stored, uh, along this edge of the driveway. Um, a concern was raised of potentially, uh, ice forming in that location. So we did add that drain inlet to move, uh, to, to help, uh, clear the snow melt and help preclude a potential icing in that location. Uh, the other, uh, change was as part of the, the shifting of the house back, uh, sorry, the garage back. Uh, the, this, uh, oak tree, um, which had previously, uh, the garage had been shifted, uh, initially um, from, uh, the, the original location and what is now the currently proposed location. Uh, because there was a desire to save this oak tree. Uh, further, uh, review of the, further looking at the oak tree. Uh, the oak tree is, is in bad shape and, uh, is really kind of a liability that close to the garage. Uh, so we are now proposing to remove, uh, the tree in this location. Uh, the other, the other change, uh, there was a small turnaround area uh, in this location, um, to to, uh, in this location to, to, to improve maneuverability for, for cars coming in and out of the garage. There is a, there is four overhead doors in the front of the garage. So to be able to help the cars back out and maneuver down the driveway from the garage or make it into the garage, this area was added. I do have a little sketch here of the, the red line here. And here were the garage in the proposed location. So it's not, it's not a full, it's not, it's approximately thirteen, approximately thirteen feet deep of a turnaround. It's, so it's not, not a depth of a parking space. But it's there to aid in the turning of, of cars in and out of the garage. The other, the other reason that was added was for, you know, front door garbage pickup to be able to allow a garbage truck to come in and, and pick up the waste instead of having to bring the, the trash cans down the 500 foot long, long driveway. It's a pretty long run to, to drag garbage cans. So those were, those were the, the changes that we're proposing. As part of keeping the, the limits of disturbance as close to as the approved plan as possible. The, the back patio has been reduced on the approved plan. There was a thirteen foot wide section of the patio in this location. It has been reduced to, to eight feet to minimize any, minimize any impacts of, of shifting the garage backwards. So we are asking for approval of this, this field change to, to be able to put the garage in the desired location.
Um, I, I'd love to just add something to that, except my video is paused and I don't know how to unpause it. It says the host has to do it, but I did want to add that that additional little spin out in the driveway area was also for snow so that they can still park up front and receive guests or packages and snow can be all stockpiled in that area. So just wanted to add that that was another reason for doing this, to have a place to put the snow.
Weeks ago, we'd have needed that.
We sure did need that this year.
We did, we did.
Bruce, you have any comments?
Yeah, John and I have been working on this. I did not prepare a memo for this evening. I have a couple of quick questions, but I'll really turn it over to, to John. Eric and Carol, how much more disturbance or is associated land disturbance associated with the proposed action? Because if you recall, you are getting, even though the work at the back of the property had not been included into disturbance that was stabilized, as you recall, the amount of work, including the septic and, and the work involved with the additions was closing in on an acre. So my question to you is, are we still closing in on an acre? Are we over an acre? What is your total net site disturbance here?
We are still under an acre of disturbance for the, for the garage and the house addition, including the, the septic work, which is this disturbance shown down through here. So we are still under an acre for that work.
Where are you, Eric? Like it wasn't, I think either point eight or point nine, if I recall correctly, where, where do you think you are now?
We, we are showing point nine acres of disturbance. So the, the, the changes were, were fairly minor to, to overall disturbance. Like I had said, we had reduced the, the size of the patio to, to again, try to get back as close as to the approved limits of disturbance. So we were able to maintain under one acre disturbance.
And with respect to the land disturbance, again, that hillside, is that going to require blasting, rock chipping, hammering? What are your thoughts on that as you get further into the hill?
Yes, there, the, the shift will go a little bit further into the hill. Some, a minor additional rock chipping may be required. I know the board had concerns originally of the duration of the rock chipping or hammering. And as part of that, right now, the plan is to actually employ two rock hammers working simultaneously to, to keep the duration down to what was, was originally anticipated.
Although it's really hard to say until you know how the rock breaks out. But by bringing in two machines and having trucks at the ready to remove the rock from the site, we're hoping to be as expeditious as possible in taking care of this.
And, and you feel you'll be able to comport with the elements of the noise ordinance in town with two rock hammers going at the same time?
Well, maybe they can go consecutive. That's a good question. That is a good question. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we can certainly have that conversation with the rock hammering people that that they have to comply with that and work within the hours of work and operation that the town, you know, allows. Obviously they're not going to do it on a weekend and they're not going to start doing this at six in the morning. So obviously we try to be as respectful as possible of all the neighbors and, and everybody around.
And, and with, if two, sound is not, you know, directly additive. If you have two rock hammers, it's, it's not like it's twice as loud. It, it may be moderately louder, but it's, it's not a direct add of, hey, you've got one, it's this, it's, it's X loud and two, it's two X. So it's, it's not going to be twice as loud. It's, it's going to be a little bit louder.
You would agree that, you would agree that two are louder than one?
How many cubic yards of material have to come out to put that, that garage in there?
Um, I believe. We had on the original approved plan that approximately 2,600 cubic yards would need to be removed. This will have a slightly, slightly increase of that as we did move it 10 feet further to the, to, to the hillside.
It doesn't necessarily mean that the entire area where the garage is pushed back is even in fact rock. So, and also when you hammer, sometimes rock breaks. I mean, it's, it's actually, in reality, it's, it's shallower in that front section than it looks on paper. You know how topo looks tighter when you look at it vertically on a paper? And then you're out there and you're like, oh, it doesn't look quite as steep.
Yeah. Most of the rock here, you know, is either schist or, or nice, pretty hard stuff when you encounter it. So, you know, you're right, Carol, you don't really know until you get started, but there's a good chance you'll have pretty, pretty heavy rock there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to John and he has some additional comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks guys. Last, I'm kind of the last man in here and this project, you do have a memo from me. And I just want to say for the record that the explanation and description of the proposed scope of work that Eric provided tonight is, is slightly expanded from what appeared in his letter. So moving forward.
The, the one thing was just the turnaround area, I believe, right? That I, I, I said that I had failed to mention in the letter.
That is correct. This project previously obtained an erosion control permit from the planning board. Julie was involved in the early phases and based on her understanding of the, the facts and the discussions with Insight, she was of the opinion that this proposal, the field change, as she understood it, could be treated or should be treated as something between an administrative field change and a full amended permit. We had this discussion at the workshop. In other words, the board really needed to see this because apparently this project has had a colorful history and I can tell from the discussions, it must have been. Eric went over the difference. You know, the, the plan I had is not as clear as this one, but it still looks like two parking spaces. It's a little wider than a turnout. Usually a turnout is, is, is limited in, in, in size. The minor drainage changes, it's more than just the drain basin. They've kind of changed the piping configuration and added some discharge points and another pipe down underneath the road, underneath the driveway to the back. So there, there's some minor changes there. However, as, as Eric indicated, they're not, they don't expand the envelope of disturbance in those areas. They're within what was originally proposed. But based on our review, we take no exception to the minor drainage modifications. We take no exception to the, the garage relocation. I looked at it as Eric did. If you look down in the one corner of the garage where that real rear deck is or porch, basically that was wide enough to almost reach the point that's shown here on the original plans. So it's not like they're blazing new ground. There was always going to be disturbance back in that corner, pushing the building back and shrinking the deck. The net impact is probably relatively minor overall in that vicinity. I, I didn't understand the necessity. I'm still not overly convinced it needs to be as big as it is for the parking expansion. It did seem to, to run over top of the proposed septic tank. And there seemed to be some modifications on the approved plans to protect piping and other things under road and paved areas. I don't know if those changes have to be revisited. If this was simply the garage and the, the drainage, based on what I knew this morning, I would be inclined to recommend that the planning board authorize this matter be forwarded to the planning board consultants to be administered, handled administratively. If they want to go with the parking area, I'll leave it up to the board on how you want to handle it. Bruce may have some comments. And, and, and to be honest with you, what, what this is going to boil down to and what I would like to see from Eric is, is a, a comparison of the previous limits of disturbance and with the new limits of disturbance and, and any identification of acreage. Because Julie was really concerned that this approached one acre before. If we blow through that one acre, however minor, we may end up with the need for permanent stormwater management facilities, which none of us would like to do. So I, I would like to see that clarification, but with respect to the turnout in the parking area, I, I defer that to the board.
And I just have one more, if I may, Erica, just one more quick question. I guess this is for you, Carol. The finished height of the garage, now you're going into rock, the tendency would be to maybe not go as deep as you might want. But your finished height and is all within zoning requirements, et cetera?
Yeah, we didn't change anything from the previous approvals.
So.
We just simply pushed it back. We did not change anything that was previously approved. And you know, if, if the board feels that the snow removal area needs to be reduced or whatever, you know, you know, we're certainly open to that. It's not, you know, we just thought it would be a good idea to have that. And it would make it easier if a garbage truck came in or you can back out. But if, if the board feels we should reduce that to a width of 10 feet, you know, Eric, you want to just slide over to that point? If you want to reduce right now where it says R D F D, you know, if you want, if you want to reduce this slightly, not a problem. We just want to be able to have an easy, you know, backup.
How about using pervious pavement blocks in there?
Sure. I mean, we could do, we could do grass pavers even.
Yeah, about the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a solid surface. It's a permeable surface.
Sure. We can even do gravel right there. I mean, sure.
Yeah.
That would much better.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's any problem.
Yeah, and just make sure that, that new septic system, that new septic tank, make sure that is out of that, that proposed parking area. So we're not paving over it.
Well, I mean, the, the park, septic tanks can, can be under pavement. It just has to be designed for it. It's, it's slightly thicker lid. But right, I think that the preferred option would be to, to have it outside of. It's not, it's not.
Yeah, skid it three feet forward on the plan.
Right. That, that would be the simpler thing.
Good idea. Those, those are, you know, good, helpful, helpful comments. Thank you.
And Eric, I guess you will probably need erosion blankets on those slopes when you got them cut back?
Uh, yes, that is, let me go back to, I mean, that. Yes, we, we do on the approved plans, right, have erosion control blankets. We, you know, showed on our S K plan the changes, so they, they aren't on there. You can tell we, we don't.
Okay.
So yes, that, that is still part of the plan is those erosion control blankets that were part of the original approval.
Thank you. So John, you're recommending we move this to administrative track?
As long as the board is comfortable with the proposals that have been made tonight. And as so long as Eric can put together a, a, a comprehensive plan that, that shows all those issues, clarifies the area of disturbance. You talked about reducing slightly that turnout or in the alternative, making it gravel or grass pavers. Relocating the septic tank, a minor area, and then re- confirming the erosion control blankets. I think this can be handled administratively if that is the pleasure of the board.
I think it's just important to, to note and John and Eric, you all discussed this, but just to underscore, just to document that indeed the disturbance in total is less than an acre. We, we don't want to go there over an acre.
Nope. So I'm going to need to see that demonstration. That was my first point. And you know, that being the case, I always prefer that when you propose something like this turnout, that it actually be physically dimensioned. That way there's, there's no argument when you go out there at the, at the final and, you know, somebody says, well, we, we did it per plan. Well, yeah, but your scale wasn't the same as my scale. But if it says on the plan that it's supposed to be, you know, five by eight, you know exactly what it's supposed to be in the contractor. So it has no issue. So as long as the final set of the sketch is clear, Eric, we should be able to walk it through.
Okay. We, we can add, certainly add dimensions to that. No problem.
Think about having, yeah, think about having your surveyor come in and stake all those boundaries out too. Do a good construction stakeout on it.
Oh, they absolutely will. For sure. We will have them do offset stakes. They're going to set a benchmark elevation.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're definitely going to be doing that.
You got them on board.
Yes. We don't have it scheduled officially, but they are aware.
Good. Way to go, Carol.
So Erica and Carol, I just want to ask you real quickly, we're running towards the end of March here. What is your thinking about the trees, cutting septic system areas, et cetera?
Well, we have not awarded the contract for construction. We've been in a bid process. We're hoping to award sometime in the next few weeks and get going. Obviously it was a challenging winter and so no work was done during that time. So we, you know, we obviously want to get started as, as expeditiously as we can.
I, I just want to be clear because Putnam County is encumbered with this federal, that recovery zone requirement, the tree cutting of, you know, certainly the septic comes at play has to be done by March 31st.
And what's the other window of time on the other end?
Start November 1st.
Well, I mean, this project's going to go on for a while, so we can see what we can get done before March 31st. But if not, we can do that tree. So we can see what we can get done before March 31st, but if not, we can do that tree clearing of the septic area after November 1st. But what about the hillside? Are you saying that those trees as well?
Yeah, there's really not a lot of wiggle room with tree cutting in this particular restriction. What I would suggest is if you can get all that stuff that we've just discussed into, uh, planning. So that predominantly John, but also I can look at it as well as Liz. We can get everything done. So at least you have a window to get some of those trees down. That's what I would recommend.
Now, Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong. Do, don't, didn't they complete the process once? Don't they already have an erosion control plan? Um, in place with the necessary bonding?
They, they do, but I'm, I'm thinking with the field change, how that's going to work out. Um.
I think the only additional clearing as a result of the field change.
The one tree.
Is the damaged oak tree. And, um, those have a tendency to fall over once construction starts anyway, so pardon me. Um, but I, I guess what I'm saying is that, um, you know. It, it is obviously a two-step dance and obviously we want to button up this field change. But if the condition presents itself, you, you do have a valid permit and you could conceivably start tree clearing. With proper notice, et cetera. In the near future, I would think, right?
Yeah. Yeah, my, my point, Carol, is that I just wanted to, to not watch you guys heading out here without. Just me reminding you that that March 31st deadline looms pretty large. Um, so you know, have a look at that. And John's, John's correct. So long as you have that permit in place, this field change will not. Negate that permit nor that bond because that was not substantively changed. So, um, but just, you know, do what you can, okay?
Yeah. So essentially what you're saying is this weekend, if we can get that tree cut down, you know, arranged for and have it done Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, sometime before the 34th. First, that section of slope should get cut. The septic, if we don't get that in the ground this spring and it goes in the, you know. The fall or next spring, it's not the end of the world. I just don't know how much tree cutting we're going to get done. And so if we had to pick our priorities, it would be in the garage vicinity. Because of construction and, you know, and giving, being able to get the rock chipping done. So. Um, okay, we will discuss.
That makes sense, Carol.
And talk to a tree person and see what we can line up.
Very good. Makes sense.
Thank you so much for that reminder.
And Eric, um, you know, I, I, tomorrow I'm pretty well spoken for, um. But I, I have some time early next week. If you need to get ahold of me and, and get this buttoned up.
All right. I'll, I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Let me chime in here. Um, I believe this is a field change. Does the board need to take any action on this? I didn't prepare anything. I assumed.
No, I, I, I think the chairman, the, basically the board. Just gave us verbal authorization to proceed as an administrative change. Is that correct, Bruce?
Yeah, that's correct.
So nothing formal is, we're, we're good. Pardon me, Chairman?
Did we do that already?
I thought so, but maybe I.
Phil, you know what? Why don't you just to make this official, although there's nothing in writing required a resolution, just, just vote if your board feels appropriate.
Okay.
Proper to authorize us to proceed.
Can we get rid of the sharing though? It's harder to see who's motioning and seconding.
I'm sorry about that.
Sorry, but no, it's okay. I just. I'm not.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Second.
And Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
John Carlo.
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Hugo.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So it passes.
Great.
Thank you.
Eric, please get in and see us again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Night.
Bye, gang. Go build a barn.
Is there anyone here for Holmes Presbyterian?
Probably not.
Liz, you want to?
Yes. So basically, um. This has been in the works for a while. And I touched base with Jeff Battistoni today. The remaining items are so close to being done. There was a field change on this one. There are bonds in place. There's a document that needs to be signed. So they're so close. But Jeff felt that to be safe. That the board should do just a basic. Um, extension. So extension of the resolution of site plan. And so I prepared you. A one-page resolution. And it attaches the December. Uh, 2017 resolution that Hugh had adopted that would have expired. The applicant, it would have expired, um, 2019. And the applicant had submitted. Um, a letter. And so what. Uh, Jeff Battistoni asked me to do is put together a resolution. I'm going to just basically paraphrase. Um, the town of Kent Planning Board has received a request for extension of the December 14, 2017. Reapproval with conditions. Of the matter of Holmes Presbyterian Camp and Conference Center. Uh, which approval with conditions is appended here too. Um, by letter request of January 25, 2019. Uh, regarding an application, uh, let's see, for site plan. For the expansion of the camp paraphrasing. Uh, summer camp and conference center, 510 acre site. In partly in Putnam County. Uh, the project could be gun construction, September 2018. Construction of the last phase of infrastructure for the project was started in February 2019. To be completed in July 29, 2019. The letter requested extension. And let's see, the applicant and their representatives have continued to pursue a field change. And completion of all the conditions of approval throughout February of 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants. Two 90-day extensions of the December 14 resolution of reapproval appended to this res- resolution. Forward from the date this extension. Of this extension resolution, which is March 11, 2021. So that would be two 90 days. From March 11, 2021, if you. Opt to adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Liz. Gentlemen, any questions about it? Um. Can I get a motion to adopt the, this resolution that was just read to us?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Hugo.
I thought so. That's what I thought. Thanks, Hugo. Sorry.
Okay.
Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Hugo.
Aye.
Ian Carlo.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Way to go.
Shall we move below the line?
Indeed.
Yes.
Go ahead. Can I go?
I'm sorry, Phil, you're breaking up a man.
Mining law is the next thing below the line. And we've been invited to a meeting. On either, um, Tuesday, April 13th or Monday, April 19th. Um, I sent an email around as quickly as I could. Um, because the 19th doesn't work for me. Um, but. So we need to answer them. Um, I don't know if everybody got the email about that.
Yep.
Um, so we need to figure out what date that will be. And that's town.
I think you want to hold it in town hall?
Yes. We would like, we would like to do in-person as much as possible with the understanding that some people still are not comfortable with that and do not want to. Travel that far. But we, uh, would hope that we could get a few people there. And start a really in-depth conversation. We obviously have gotten a lot of comments. A lot of comments from you guys, the zoning board, the C A C, some public comments. We are going to kind of consolidate all them into. What we got, sit down and try to come up with something great for the town of Kent. But if I can just interject here for a minute, because one of the real reasons I'm on here tonight. Is, um, and I've spoken to a few of you about this. Is how shocked I was reading the newspaper article that we were all having this, uh, contentious battle over this. So I wanted to, yeah. So I just wanted to clear the air and make sure there was no hard feelings. I thought we were doing this the right way. Uh, sending it over and asking for comments from you guys. I'm not sure. If we, anybody was upset about that, that method of doing it. Certainly over the past year, we have had. A challenging time, meeting. And working things like this out with, uh, you know, not being able to meet in person and everything. We've kind of delayed this a lot longer than we. Wanted to, but we do want to get the ball rolling. We really look forward to your cooperation with this. We think you are. Equal partners in this all the way through. We value your input. Um, certainly the direction we're going now. Is the direction I think that Liz came to us back when we first started this discussion and said. You really need to just really look at your soil removal code. It's probably a better method of, of going about this than I think the path we were originally leading down. Um, so. I hope we can all work together and, and come up with a good solution for this.
I, I'm sure we all want to. Try to help the town board with this as much as we possibly can.
Thank you.
We got to keep the media out. No more fake news.
Does anybody want to add something, question, anything? Then let's move on to Putnam Nurse wants to work below the line for us today.
So just a reminder, everybody respond so we can have a good turnout at that meeting.
Liz, did you want, did you want or need me there?
We would like all the consultants there, to be honest with you.
Okay. Can you forward me that email, Liz? I don't remember seeing it.
Oh, okay. I will make sure. I'll do a reply to all. I didn't realize that.
Because I, I would like to be involved. So thank you.
Okay, absolutely. I will make sure to reply to all and include you.
Thank you.
Did anybody else not get it? I'll, I'll check. I'll check.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to sign off for the night. All right. Thank you.
What date have we confirmed?
Yes, we haven't.
Okay, we're, we're not confirmed, but we know we're going to get together.
It's either, it's either Tuesday, April 13th at 7:00 PM or. I believe it's a Monday, April 19th. Does that sound right?
Yeah, something like that. It was an email.
Hey Liz, maybe make a new email because I got that email with questions. I don't really know if I was to respond favorably to it or not. How I felt.
I can, I can send it, I can send it back out. To everybody and make sure the whole board is copied and consultants.
Saying, you know, whether or not we'll be in attendance or not, if we want to stay home or whatever it is. So more of like a question.
Okay.
Yeah, if we don't want to be live at the meeting, we can do it by Zoom.
We've talked to the, uh. You know, the videographer, we're going to try to work out something where we can accommodate a, a hybrid type of method if we have to.
Beautiful.
Hey, hey, guys, remind me the date of that, please.
Yes, please.
It's, it would be either. Um, Tuesday, April 13th and Chris, correct me.
No, that's right. It's the 13th or the 19th.
And, um, and that's a Monday, the 19th.
Yes.
Okay, I got you guys.
And it will definitely be a hybrid because a lot of people won't go. So.
Right.
That's fine.
Okay.
To show up, it's got to be both.
Looking forward to it.
Anything else? Gentlemen? All right, who's working?
Okay, below the line, Putnam Nursing. We've been working through some legal documents. We're getting closer. Um, and I've been reaching out and communicating with the applicant reps. So we're very close. Um, Kent Development Commercial Lot. Um, I sent out, um. In collaboration with Bruce and John Andrews, I sent out, um. An update on the conditions of approval of what really remains is, um. A slew of, um. Legal documents and, uh, bonds to be finalized and an inspection fee and consulting fee. So closer. Uh, Kent Self Storage. I don't even remember. That's, we did a reapproval. They may expire at some point. 52 Kent Corp., I think I mentioned, that's the one I call Mazada. They still have conditions of approval to address. I was hoping they would apply, you know, send something back so I don't have to. Do another memo. Same with G A D F, uh, conditions of approval. And then we get to Enunziata.
Uh, still waiting for the survey update.
Okay, um, Route 52, the status hasn't changed. I haven't heard anything. Rodriguez?
Um, Vera had sent out a memo to them asking if they still would like to, uh, forward on the. Application they wrote back to Vera. My recollection is indicating they would like to, but as of yet, we still haven't seen anything new.
And Renee is, I think that's one that's.
Same, same thing. He wrote back saying he'd like to remain on the agenda, but we still not seen anything now.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments, anything they would like to say?
Getting shot coming through tomorrow.
Good night.
I got, I got.
Can I get a?
I, I got, I got my second shot coming up tomorrow morning.
Good night.
How's everybody else doing?
I got my first, yeah.
I'm waiting to turn 60.
Oh, you're a young saint shouldn't, shouldn't leave your mother.
I'm waiting to turn 39. Anyway, you old people, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll move that.
People.
Hey, hey, guys, real quick, we got Catherine's iPhone raising her hand. Is that somebody?
Oh.
On here?
Yeah, here.
But.
Kathy.
I'm mute.
Muted.
Let me see here.
There you. There you go.
There you go.
Okay. I just have a question. Um, are you coming to the meeting March 16th when Jamal family? For Bob's Garage is going in front of the town board?
Who are you speaking? Of us?
I'm asking, I'm asking you, the planning board, are any of the planning board members going to the meeting? Uh, Tuesday, the six, March 16th for the, uh, the plant, the town board is having the Jamal family for Bob's Garage showing up.
I don't know anything about it.
What the hell is this for?
Uh, well, because I guess they're, they're bringing a proposal of what they're going to do for Bob's Garage. And I did mention at the last meeting to Bill Eustace, I said. That had been approved by the town, the bus, you know, the, um, gas station and the donuts and everything. I said it was the D E P that put a kibosh to it because it was too close to the Croton River. And I was just wondering why the town, the town board is entertaining them if they haven't been in front of the planning board.
Yeah, why aren't they coming to the planning board first?
Is there any planning board members interested in attending that meeting?
Consultants, do you, do you still have meetings on Fridays? Where they can come and see if a, if a, um, a project is viable?
Yes.
Bruce, do you still have those meetings on Fridays?
They're now Tuesdays.
Yes.
Yes?
Tuesdays.
Okay, so that's what I. Tuesdays, okay. Well, I was just wondering why. Um, there may, they told us at Lake Carmel Park District meeting that this was going on. I went to the town board meeting. And this project is now coming back. They're going to remediate. And I'm like, I said to Bill Eustace, unless they're taking the mountain back with all the cars piled up. Um. You know, how, how far, how are they going to remediate it? I, I don't understand. So I'm just, I'm just curious of what's going on. Because it's my birthday Tuesday and I might not be able to make the meeting.
Is there any planning board members that are able to attend, uh, the meeting on Tuesday if I make it hybrid and you can stay on Zoom?
Well, there's, there's really no application for, before the board on this. Um, so I'm not sure what action the board would want to take other than being citizens and listening to what's going on. Um, which of course anybody can do, but Kathy, we, we. This is the first, at least I, I'm hearing of this and I think, uh, John and Liz, same thing.
Yeah, I don't know anything about it. It's not an active application.
Right.
And I don't know that there's been an application.
This is how we got in trouble with the truck stop. This is exactly what happened with the truck stop. So I'm just saying.
You think?
I'm just wondering because I might not be able to be there Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't, I don't. You know, if I was assigned something, I'd take a look at it, but I'm
Okay. Not familiar with. That's why I was wondering, even if you just come and not say anything, but at least, you know, be there.
I'll tell them to get their papers together, get an application into the planning board with all the supporting documentation. And then the planning board's involved. That's where it should be anyway.
Right, okay.
Thanks for bringing it to everybody.
You're right. That's, I'm just wondering.
Thanks, Kathy.
Nice to be blindsided.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
I figured I'd just let you know. It's me.
And happy birthday.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, boy.
Good night, everybody.
Bruce, thanks for all your.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm still here, Phil.
My last job is secretary.
Can I get a motion finally to close the meeting?
Dennis.
I did.
And a second.
I'll second it.
You go, you go. Sorry.
Giancarlo.
Aye, two times.
Simon. Hugo.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The meeting is closed. Thank you all.
Vote for April 13th. That's the only one I can go to. I'll send you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night, everybody. Stay well.
Night, everybody. Be healthy.